Twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director T Felton.
Here.
Bierman.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Lala Bertie.
Here.
Raj.
Here.
That's seven presents.
Excellent, thank you. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening as well as the committee of the whole meeting for April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Tonight, we have an exciting quality in action. South St. Paul High School's Women's Society Group, along with the Assistance League of St. Paul and Minneapolis, are going to highlight their partnership for greater access to feminine care products at South St. Paul High School. Welcome, come on up, the center stage is yours.
Chair Raj, while they're coming up, I'll just kind of sing some praises here. So a couple, a couple layers of that here. So we were talking, and I'm sure it'll come up in our committee of the whole update about the power of student voice, and tonight's presentation really speaks to that. So when I came in just over a year ago, one of the things I shared, those of us who are around remember the ninety-day entry plan, and part of that was to get out and talk to folks. And so student groups were on that list, and these young women were on that list. And when I met with them, just the power of their voice and moving me, the candor with which they spoke to me as really a stranger coming in, I mean, they knew the role I was going to serve, but sharing with me some legitimate concerns that they'd like to see addressed in their, in their school. And so, as an example, we're not going to talk about necessarily here, but they said, you know, we're not getting the kind of health education we'd like to get. We'd like to see all-gender bathrooms, a number of things. But then they started speaking about access to feminine care products and how that's been a struggle. And spoke to certain staff members who were joining us who had kind of a secret, you can come to my room if you need something kind of thing, and it's like, we don't need to operate like this. We can, we can really support our, our, our young women as, as they need support in that area. And I, and I had not known about period poverty, so I'll just own, like, I didn't realize what an issue that was for many young women. And so it really spoke to me. And Assistance League, who's supporting this work, is a partner I've had for a long time, so as principal in Richfield, they did a number of things. They supported us with clothing and food for our students and, and families. They did purchases of books. We were able to, like, for an entire grade, our entire sixth grade, were able to get books. Then I was an associate superintendent in Minneapolis. They helped support providing uniforms to our students that had uniformed schools. They bought books that we were going to have the author present to the students, and unfortunately, the pandemic disrupted that, so I'm planting a seed that maybe we have some unfinished business in that department, so. But I just, you know, it's not about me, but I wanted to make sure that people know what a great partner Assistance League has been, prior to me coming here and now joining in with us here, and that, just how much student voice matters and what it does to transform our district. So excited to have this group with us here.
Wonderful, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, as Dr. Oh, I'm Renata Awadala, I'm one of the leaders of Women's Society.
I'm Queen Iki, I'm a member of Women's Society.
I'm Olivia Banks, I'm a member of Women's Society.
And I'm Nyla Lepkin, I'm a leader for Women's Society. I think that, like Dr. Zambrino was saying, we did hear that it was a struggle to get period products, like having to go to the nurse's office and having to get a pass, and we really wanted to make it accessible for everybody to easily be able to access period products on a daily for emergency uses or any uses at all. So, once we met with the Assistance League, we made it easier to put little dispensaries in bathrooms, which helped a lot, and we've been getting good feedback about it. A lot of people posted about it on their stories, saying that it was very helpful, and that's what the whole goal was.
And like, people's feedback also was like, they say it saved so much time for them. Instead of like, missing so much class time, like, like twenty minutes of class just waiting in line in the health office, just to get a pad or a tampon or anything like that. So it, it made everything easier for us, and even for teachers too, instead of interrupting them. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's also way more comfortable, especially asking a male teacher to go to the nurse, because usually their response would be like, oh, what's the problem? And it's kind of like awkward.
Right.
Product. Now that they're in the all-gender bathrooms, and also our second-floor bathrooms, which are the most busiest bathrooms, it's way more easier and like, comfortable. And yeah, nothing but positive feedback from those.
Yeah.
I agree with everything they basically just said, like, everyone's more comfortable with just having it in the bathroom, as you can grab what you need, even just, you could grab what you need for the whole day if you wanted to.
I mean, it did take a long time to get them at our school, but at the end, we still got them, and we're very thankful for them.
Yeah, we'd also like to thank them a lot.
A lot.
For the funding, and helping us make it possible.
And I think we got, like, so much good feedback that even middle school wants them too in their bathrooms, so.
Their next classroom.
Yeah.
So how, how do you purchase the products?
So that we, so we, before, like, to begin with, we, we met with the Assistance League at school, and we showed them what brands were the best, what, like, everything, the money, everything. And.
In determining the brands, we had, like, a survey where stu-, in the bathrooms, where students could scan a QR code and just tell us what products they liked the best, and what they'd like to see in the bathrooms.
And then, again, we went with Assistance League again, and then we, they provided for us the, the tampons, the pads, and everything. We just told them, like, how much we wanted, and it was more than enough, so.
Great, great.
Are you running into any storage concerns or challenges? Like, where do you keep the extras? Who refills them?
So, sorry, go ahead.
Um, we have them in all the bathrooms, and then the extras, Ms. Demings and Ms. Ritzer, have them in their ba-, in their classrooms, just in case students want to go into their classrooms if we're out of stock in the bathrooms and grab any.
And then we, we also restock them sometimes. And so does the teacher, so whenever we go to the bathroom, see it empty, we check in with them, tell them it's empty, so we take a bunch, and then we stock them.
So it's not like the old days where you had to put a quarter in the machine?
No.
So there's no money in?
No money, no, not at all.
Fantastic.
I think it's really remarkable. I mean, like, you made real change inside your own school, and I think that is something to be incredibly proud of, and the partnership that you've done is truly remarkable.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Have any of you, like, typed up your experience and submitted it to any, you know, newspapers or journals or, you know, student advocacy things? I think you've got a great story here that I think more people would want to learn about, and that they could see that as an action that they could take on themselves, seeing as how we were able to accomplish it here.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, so that other schools too can have that accessible for their students, so yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, just walking in, sorry, I didn't get your name.
Lisa.
Yeah, Lisa, she told us she wanted to write an article about us, and we got a photo for her, so she'd be our first.
Love it.
That's great. Say, ladies, how is your accessibility to the bathrooms, just in general? Are you guys able to use the restroom when you need to? Is it, I mean, I've heard mixed reviews about bathroom accessibility.
So with our bathroom system, basically, it's open throughout passing time, which is seven minutes before.
All the bathrooms? One bath-, what bathrooms are open?
Our main bathrooms, so like, our bathrooms in our history, history corps, Langley Lake corps.
So like, second and third floor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our most busiest bathrooms. And then our all-gender bathrooms are always open, which are two bathrooms by the attendance office in our school.
Is it adequate?
Our all-gender.
The, the timing of everything? Do you have enough time?
I mean.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we do.
Yeah, I would say it does take a lot of class time to, because the only bathrooms that are open all hour are the all-gender bathrooms, so it is, it does take up a lot of time, which was, we were trying to avoid with the whole period product situation, so that kind of took a backfire a little bit because of having to wait in lines and only having two bathrooms available during class periods, which, you know, a student could need those products at any time, so that's one, one fault on the whole situation that I think.
Because it's only two bathrooms for the ninth and twelfth, ninth through twelfth grade, so if you got to go to the bathroom, you're rating, you're waiting in a line for like, twenty minutes downstairs, and that takes a lot of time, you miss a lot.
And you're traveling all the way, like, across.
Yeah, you could be on third floor and have to go all the way to bottom.
All the way down.
And they did add minutes to our passing time. It wasn't always seven minutes, they added two, like, two, three minutes extra, but at the same time, it really didn't do much, because throughout the seven minutes, everybody's trying to use the bathroom before class, so. And we also have like, a limit of how many people can be in the bathroom at one time. It's like, six people, so then there's a line outside the bathroom too.
So there's maybe some work that needs to be done with our bathroom accessibility? I mean, I know of kids that aren't drinking water throughout the day because they don't want to have to use the bathroom.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay. That needs to be looked at. Talked about.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing this to our attention, we really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Good, good information.
And thanks for all your help and support too.
And the Assistance League, thank you so much.
Yes.
I greatly appreciate that.
If there's anything that we can do to help as a board or as women, we're here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have bracelets for y'all.
Everybody who presents always gets the Packer bracelet, so.
The little Packer bracelet.
There you go.
As do guests, supporters, if they're interested.
Congratulations on what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
And I have extras for you actually.
Well done.
Yeah, and I will share that they are expanding it to the, to the middle schools. Well, they mentioned it might be, but it is. I talked to Principal Borg, and they're going to offer the same thing with the dispensers in the middle school, and so their work is not just affecting the high school, but the middle school as well.
It's a huge amount of change you guys have been able to do. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
For having us.
You bet, anytime.
Thank you.
Anytime.
All right. We're going to move on to the report section of our meeting. No public listening session, items to report. Those would be done through the first meeting of the month at four fifteen here at City Hall, or through the school's website. Vice Chair Weber, do you have a cow report for us? Or committee of the whole report?
Yes, so our committee of the, committee of the whole, our cow, met at five PM, and so we had a few different items on the agenda. We talked about the kind of final update and approval for the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee reports. We talked about, it's called our OPEB trust, so it's basically a trust that the school has to pay for expenses when members of our staff and staff retire. There are certain post-retirement benefits they get, and so we have a trust fund that helps pay for that. And we talked about kind of our allocations for funding and risk in that, in that fund. And then we talked about the resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers, and the resolution for discontinuing and reducing some positions that had been restructured through other decisions the board has made. And then we also did our committee updates. All members of this board sit on various outside committees, and so we had updates from District Nine Seventeen, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Community Ed, the Ed Foundation, and various, and various things. So we talked about all of that, and that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Weber. I'll turn next to Superintendent Dr. Zambrino to provide some highlights from around the district.
All right, thank you, Chair Raj. Another just reminder, we're coming up quickly, I just, every time, I can't believe how soon it is, on our summer learning, so I want to remind folks that it is open now to enroll. That information is on our website, or if you have questions, you can certainly call the school, but we have opportunities for students in grades pre-kindergarten through eighth grade. As a reminder, that's grade for the next school year. So there's Summer Learning Academy for grades one through five, as well as seventh and eighth graders, and then those transitional programs, so Early Learning Blast for our pre-K, there's a kindergarten camp, Packer Preview for our incoming sixth graders, and then Packer Prep for incoming ninth graders. So lots of things to keep our kids on track, get them caught up, or just get them ready for the transition to the next school year. Another important topic that we want to share with folks, there's a great opportunity to see a screening of a documentary, I should say, called Like, and so it's, it was built on, and learning that people have had, so for anyone who's learned that there was, when I think Facebook was the first one to create the like button, and when, what happens is when somebody likes something that you post, it actually fires dopamine in your brain, and actually forms an addiction. And so there's this, a lot of research on some of the challenges of how to balance this fun thing that could be social media with the other sides of it that can be, I'm seeing a head shake over there, and I'm kind of there too, or it's, it's a challenge, right, sometimes? And so this opportunity is available for families. There's a kind of open session, open house at six PM at Two Rivers on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, and then they'll screen the presentation, the documentary, Like, at seven. And then Amy McAvoy, who's our high school social worker, will be part of the panel that will discuss kind of the topic after the, the showing of Like. So lots of research on the challenges with social media, and we know that it's, it's caused a lot of mental health challenges in our, in our country, so a great opportunity for families to learn more about that. So look at district highlights, really fun today, we got to hand out Silver Apple Awards. So this comes every year to the Educational Foundation, and what's so great about it is these are awards that were given to staff from students. So students nominate staff, and then when they are chosen, we get to go, so Beth Squira from the foundation and myself went to each one of the sites, and we pulled the kids out of class to, to announce to their teacher that they're one of the winners, or any staff really. And so Bridget Contreras, who's kind of a catch-all, they described her as their school mom, and theirs today, and put, I mean, tearful smile on her face, so a lot of fun there. That was for the secondary. Laura Dozier won at Lincoln Center, her response was priceless, she dropped her stuff on the ground, and, and the kids were just so sweet to, you know, the hugs and the things for her. And then we went over to Capoja, and Megan Fransen was awarded hers from both current students and former students. So that was kind of fun to see when they were pulling the kids out of class, like, oh wait, these kids are in a different grade, so just that those relationships carry all the way through. And so always great to highlight the individuals, but I think it's also worth stating how many of our staff just go above and beyond, and I think you could probably hand out silver, silver apples all day long if we gave them to everybody who was deserving, but great to see these staff recognized for their amazing contributions. Last week was Neurodiversity Week, so at Lincoln Center, they celebrated that, and Neurodiversity Week is celebrating the fact that we have a lot of differences. Sometimes we might think of disabilities, but I think different abilities, and so what they did is spent some time each day of the week talking about different students and, or, and adults frankly, so they discussed, you know, autism and emotional and behavioral disorders, and helped the kids understand what, what those terms mean. And then they had dress-up days and class lessons to, to again, teach the kids, and just create that, that welcoming and inclusive space, knowing that we're, no, no two of us are the same, and we all are in different places, but that we celebrate and enjoy everybody for the unique individual they are, so kudos to our Lincoln team for that. Had the fun opportunity of joining two of our teachers, Mr. Yaudes and Jane Cornell, who brought in these Elwah River tables. So what you're seeing there is a, a table that you can get, we have a partnership with the Science Museum of Minnesota, and it is based on an actual river. So this model is the riverbed, if that's the right term, for the Elwah River, that had a dam put into it. And so there's eighty years of sediment that built up behind this dam. It's a real dam in Washington, and it was built in nineteen twenty, what ended up happening was it really disrupted salmon migration and disrupted their fisheries, and so it was up for a long time for the electricity, but then it was like, okay, we need to bring this dam down, what's, how do you do that? What's the safest way, knowing there's eighty years of sediment behind it? So the kids get to pour the sand into the model, and, and determine, do you just pull the whole dam out? And you can pull out the dam and see what happens with the sand, or do you do it slowly but surely, so it's really hands-on, engaged learning? So I got to spend time in Mr. Yaudes and Ms. Cornell's class, and the kids, I'll tell you, the teachers on this, it's super fun, but they're all over the place, so I think they could use probably more than just me and some of the others that were there to, to help out, but really neat, hands-on, inquiry-based learning going on in our, in our secondary building there. Also, with our secondary students, they had the, the high school Spanish heritage, and our English learner students, who are native Spanish speakers, had an opportunity to take a field trip not far, just over to St. Paul, to see where Hispanic heritage is present in the community. So they did scavenger hunts and got to see the murals and different things where that heritage shows up. They got to eat lunch at the Mercado there, and so just a chance to see where, where the heritage is really being celebrated and brought to life. So a fun, fun opportunity to get out in the community and see that. Last week, we had the IB art show, and I'm always impressed when I see the artwork our, our students can do. I think I have a number of talents, and art is not really high on the list, so if you need a stick figure, I can draw a mean stick figure, but our students are just amazingly talented artists, and so chance to show off the work they've been doing in the IB program, but to each other, to the staff, and to families and friends, so a neat, neat opportunity there, and I'm always envious of their, their talents that I just don't have. Always fun to see that in our students. Other talents we had, so there was a Reflections Art Contest, and so each year, the National PTA Organization hosts an art contest called Reflections, and that's for students grades K-12. This year's theme was Show Your Voice. And so students created pieces and got to write how they fit the theme, and then local PTAs get to choose winners. So each school picks one winner from each category, and Capoja had two students placed at the state in dance choreography. Lila placed second in the intermediate age group, and Elizabeth placed first in the primary age group, and now they're heading to the national competition. So, pretty cool. And then last, we just wanted to highlight Shawnee is our kind of lead nurse in the district, Shawnee Kruger, and she was able to attend a press conference with, or brought by Amy Klobuchar and Senator Klobuchar and Representative Angie Craig, just highlighting the, the drug epidemic that's going on, and how schools and communities can partner to help address, you know, we all know the, the opioid crisis that's gone on, so neat to see our nursing staff out there being on the front lines of trying to address this ongoing crisis and being part of the solution. So kudos to Shawnee. As always, if people are interested in keeping track of the district, we have things on our social media, and whichever version you talked about, we did talk about social media earlier, there are some good things with it, so a great way to stay plugged in, but please keep that life balance. Some important dates, April twenty-seventh, we have the High School Student Family Connections, May thirtieth is Memorial Day, so there will be no school, and June eighth, coming right up, the last day of school.
It's not very far away.
It is not. And then, as always, our board meetings, any information, people want to keep track on the board, board packets, videos of past meetings, anything you want to know that's going on with the board, please hop on the website.
Excellent.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. All right. Next, we move on to our consent items. The consent agenda are items that are typically financial claims, staffing, personnel in nature, and are not a part of public discussion. Typically, these have already been presented in a board packet, and have already been discussed and explained, and do not require kind of further action. Do I have a motion for our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. All right. And we have no policies to review at this time at our last board meeting. Was the third reading of a set of policies? We have more to come in short order. And then, that brings us to some business items. I am looking for a motion to approve the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution discontinuing and reduction of positions.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have Joel Miltier for some discussion.
Good evening, the resolution before you tonight is a discontinuance and reduction of educational programs and positions. As you may recall, a few weeks ago, we discussed, as a means of continuing on our pathway to Packer Promise, we need to make sure that we're presenting everything possible to make sure that our students have the very best outcomes in the building, in the buildings where there are. And so one of those pieces that we're bringing forward tonight is the restructure of our Department of Equity and Learning, and you have the details in the resolution in front of you. We ask that the board review that and approve that recommendation for restructure this evening.
Any questions? With that, that's a resolution. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Bierman?
Yeah.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Raj?
Yes.
That's seven ayes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Stay close, Joel, as I am now looking for approval of the South St. Paul School Board to approve a resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I turn discussion over to you again.
Thank you. Bringing forward again, non-renewal of probationary teachers, we do have a few additional teachers to add to the list for non-pro-, for probationary termination for the end of this year. These are tier-one licensed teachers in the district. At the end of every year with a tier-one license, we must non-renew, and those teachers have to reapply for their tier-one license with the state. They can renew up to three years with that tier-one license, and so we're bringing those forward tonight for your approval.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion? I know during our committee of the whole, you provided a great education for us on how those tier licenses work, as I think in the field of education, that's still a relatively new process that is sort of implemented. Lisa, as a resolution, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Bierman?
Yes.
And Chair Raj?
Yes.
That's seven ayes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Miltier. That takes us through our business items. To our last part of the night, we are looking for board members to provide a brief report from their committee work, or events that they have participated, or seen a passion in. I will start all the way down to my left, Director Claflin.
Thank you. The next local issues meeting will be held on Wednesday at eight AM, and that is for the members of the Chamber of Commerce to come together, talk with people from the city, hear a lot from the city council, other city departments, and the school as well, so we'll be meeting next week. And I have also seen a passion in the families of Capoja students. This week, we had the Spring Family Festival, and seeing that many folks excited to accompany their children to somewhere that the kids are spending the day, and our, seeing how at-home our children feel in the school district was really wonderful.
Wonderful, thank you. Director Lala Bertie?
A couple things. One, and I don't know if this was a district-wide thing, or if this was the teachers individually decided to do this, but one of our grandsons was going through the MCAs, and the teacher sent home three-by-five cards to the parents, and asked them to write a positive note to encourage them to do their absolute best for the MCAs, so John and I each got to write So, uh, John and I each got to write a card to Thomas. And, um, and so then when, right before they start testing, then the card, each day a different card was given to them. And so they got words of encouragement from all of us to say, do your best and we're thinking of you. I thought that was just a, once again, showing the creativity and the teachers that just go outside of the box to, um, make things happen. I was, I thought that was pretty cool. And then secondly, and this is also a grandmother moment here, but anytime that you buy a Kaposha Days button this year, um, the artwork on the button was done by our grandson, Thomas. He was, he was selected to, um, his drawing was selected to put on the button. So I just wanted to give Thomas a shout out.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Let me move all the way down to my right. Director Bierman?
Yeah, the meeting that was concerning the, uh, adult education program was held and it's a very important pe- feature. And there's, the question, of course, is to, uh, make sure that adults in the area are aware of it and so that they are aware of that opportunity. English second language, of course, being one of the popular parts, but there's several. And, uh, if you're an adult and you feel uneducated, take a look.
Excellent. Thank you. Director Wendy Felton?
As we're getting towards the end of the school year, there's a lot of activities coming and going on. I, I did attend the play at the high school two weeks ago, Tempest, which was a Shakespeare play. Excellent job. Students are phenomenal. Great production. And I personally thanked Mr. Holson for, for the entertainment and the great job that they did. A couple other events that are coming up, uh, next week, the Activities Athletic Banquet on Wednesday. And then the following week, Wednesday, May 10th, which is the Education Foundation Scholarship Banquet, which will be held at 6:00, also at the high school. It's, it's a lot, a lot of fun. And as I am the representative to Intermediate School District 917, which is down at the, in the Rosemont Vocational School, we are having our employee recognition event next week on Thursday. And also coming up this Friday is the TESSA Program Spring Formal Dance, which is, which is a lot of fun for the students to come. And there's always some things to eat, music to dance for, introductions. It's, it's a wonder, wonderful event for the TESSA students at DCTC. And a couple other fun events coming up in the elementaries. Uh, Lincoln Center, they are planning their Spring Fling, which will be held on Thursday, May 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Uh, there's more information about the event. You can look on their, on their website. I know Principal Starkman sent out information to, to everyone in the principal's newsletter. If, uh, if you know for sure you will be attending, they would appreciate an RSVP by you, uh, preferably if possible by this Wednesday, if you're attending. It, it looks like it will be a fun event for all families to go. That's Thursday, May 11th. And the other thing coming up, fun from Kaposha Education Center, this coming Saturday, the 29th, they are having a taco feed at the Croatian Hall from 12 until 4:00 PM. The tacos are $4 each and they are wonderful. I have had them many times. They are excellent. This is going to be a fundraiser for their fifth grade end-of-the-year party program that they are planning for their students that will be graduating from elementary and attending up into middle school in the fall. So this Saturday, Taco Feed at the Crow. It'll be great. Please come and support that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Director Tim Felton?
Nothing to add at this point, thank you.
And Director Weber?
Uh, one thing, so one of the exciting new things that is going to come about next school year is we are adding a, um, student representative or two student representatives to the board um, so that we can welcome in, um, some more input from the students who, um, are part of our, are part of our district. And so if you are a sophomore or a junior and you've always wanted to hang out with some awesome school board people and learn about the process it takes to run your school, um, the application is online. It is due May 5th. So, May 5th at 11:59 PM. So you have through May 5th, um, to apply. And so again, this is for, um, sophomores and juniors who will become next year's juniors and seniors. Uh, and we really encourage you to apply. We would like a wide diverse group of people to apply because everyone's opinion is valid. You just have to apply and there'll be, there's a short, um, uh, questionnaire and then there'll be an interview, um, to select the, the person who, um, we will be selecting. So stay tuned.
Excellent. Um, we look forward to celebrating all of our accomplishments with our staff and students as we approach the end of the year. It always goes so quickly. Um, but with no other items on our, our agenda tonight, I'm looking for a motion, um, to adjourn.
So moved.